Hi, everybody. So, I'll make a couple assumptions. Everyone's here for the rental, is that correct? Not everybody.
I thought everyone was here for Lenny.
So, it's not on the agenda, okay? And our rules state that if an item is not on the agenda, everyone who would like to speak has a five-minute window to speak, which actually is more of a sense it's not on the agenda. If it was on the agenda, you only get three. So, tonight you'll have five. Do you have a designated speaker, or is everyone going to want to speak? Okay, everyone will speak. I'm just trying to do this as orderly as possible.
Commander, there'll be no interaction between us.
Yeah, and that, so when you do address the council, I ask that you do address everybody, not one person in particular. It is the part of our rules is that we're not, 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 we do not have to or need to engage. So, you may ask questions, you may not get answers. A lot of it will be fact-finding for ourselves as well, to find out what the issues are that we messed up on, it appears. So, we'll start that, and that item, just so you know, is number six, which is public input items not on the agenda. However, what we might do is take it out of order here this evening. We have number seven, so we might do the mayor's report first, and we're going to do a proclamation for bufo's this evening, so we'll probably do that first. And that way, if Lenny, if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to stay, if, you know, but otherwise, we'll do that first, okay? Any questions?
Let's get going.
So, it's...
Okay.
Every dollar, every new dollar onto them without causing financial pain to them. You know, whether it's a additional fee for a water meter, now a doubling of the rental ordinance, it becomes a serious burden. And while it may have been on the agenda, I don't know how many of you own rental property here, but we didn't, none of the rental, you know, the property owners in Highwood really had a seat at that table when these items are being discussed. There's a number of other things that are concerning about the ordinance, the way it's written. As a licensing ordinance, if we lose our license because there's something that the city inspector doesn't like, and let me preface, this isn't an indictment of Ed. Ed Tambori did a, he's a wonderful guy. The inspections that he did this year found him to be super professional, did a beautiful job, and followed through, did everything I would expect of an inspector. And so, that shouldn't be on the table. It's not a lack of professionalism. It's more, how many times can you inspect the same GFI, the same smoke detector? There's 10-year battery life in a lot of these smoke detectors, they're lithium batteries. So, once you put them up, in theory, you shouldn't have to put up another one for 10 years. Once you change out a GFI, you shouldn't have to re-change that GFI for years, if ever. Well, you know, there's, there are times, but certainly not within a three-year span. So, the question becomes, you're charging $150 per unit per year, for, for what? I mean, you can do it, I can understand that maybe in that first year, that money needs to be spent because there's additional costs to really get the program rolling. But then it should be every other year, or every third year, but we're still paying $150 per year, per unit. And I'm not, I'm no expert in how many rental units there are, but I'm guessing that that's probably somewhere in the range of $140,000, $150,000 a year. And I don't understand the Highwood Estates being at $70, where, you know, my piddly two flat, it's $150 a unit. I don't think there's any less time that it takes. I mean, I know most of those inspections only took 12 minutes, 15 at the most. So, I don't think there's any less time to go into Highwood Estates than there are two adjacent buildings going into some flats. The licensing issue, what you've, what you've essentially done is made it difficult, if you don't like something, the inspector says, "No, we're pulling your license." That means I've got to kick my tenant out. To be in compliance, I've got to cease operations, which means I've got to kick a tenant out. Well, I can't do that. I've broken the law. That's illegal in Illinois. So, there's other things that, and I think we, you were sent a sort of outline of some of our concerns as a group, but I'd really like the council to think about how it's impacting the landlords, and see if there's not some way for us to mutually tweak, tweak the program to make it work for everyone. When you started this, and we've, we've owned property here in Highwood since 1990...
But let me just stop you right there, sorry, Todd. What, would anyone else, what you could do, since it's a five-minute window?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. What I'm thinking is if someone else would like to speak, you could speak for them, and we could do that, you could take their five minutes. Otherwise, we'll have someone else come up. Just in case everyone wishes to talk, we got to really...
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Philo box.
It must be my eloquence, right?
Tonight's reading.
You know, all right, so I keep going then.
Well, we, you know, for, when we started this program, and how, it's been 15 years now that this program's been in place?
It was before, we were before.
Yeah, I think so.
Initially, when they started charging for it, initially, it was supposed to be, I think it was $40 per unit, and then if you passed, you didn't pay the next year, and eventually, it was a sliding scale, and eventually, it got down to, you know, we're only going to inspect you every three years. It was something to that effect. And then it went up to $70, and I got to tell you, when you first started it, I thought, God, this is super, this is super. I think it's a great idea, because it gives the city, and selfishly, the landlord, myself and Deb, the ability to say, hey, we had an inspector come into our unit, they proved, they should, they saw that we had smoke detectors where they were supposed to be, they saw we had the GFIs, they saw we, you know, whatever myriad of things that the inspection was certifying, I could waive that piece of paper if something, God forbid, happened, you know, if there was a fire. Well, you didn't have a smoke detector. Well, yeah, I did. It was there. We, we had it inspected, here is your proof that we, we did so. So, I wasn't opposed to doing that. And over the years, what's transpired, what I was hoping was going to be an every two or three years inspection, pay your fee, all good. It turned into $70 per year and getting no benefit. I can, by a show of hands, I can tell you that the vast majority of the landlords in this room, you inspected nothing for six, seven years in a row, and you still charged the same $70 per unit. So, you didn't render a service that we were paying for. Based on the way the ordinance was written prior, that's not right. And that's tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city took in and did nothing for. Where did that money go? And I, I'm not blasting anyone, but I think that there is probably some pleasant medium that we can come to that will satisfy our mutual desire to have the city and, you know, the safety of our populace and everything, in a good way, without landlords feeling like they're sort of being raped. I'll let, I'll let anyone else go. Thank you, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Any more, any, I mean, there's, if there's other issues on the ordinance you want to address, please. Absolutely, come on up.
I'm Brian. Thanks for the platform that we get to, you know...
Brian, what's your last name, sorry?
Cole. Right, Cole. The platform here where we can, you know, address everybody and, you know, get an idea of kind of what concerns we have. So, I, you know, I've been a Highwood resident for about three years now, got a beautiful wife, we're going to make some Highwood babies, it's going to be awesome. So, I, I'm starting to think, however, that maybe you guys don't like me, because, you know, I'm feeling nickled and dimed every time I take the trash out. I was, I was out of the country last week, I, I got a, you're Adrian, right? I got a, oh, you don't need to address me, I guess, but a ticket on my...
Yeah, address us, not Adrian.
A ticket on my garbage can from Adrian that says, I have to pay a fee because it was a day late, and, and if I don't pay the fee, then there could be a warrant issued for my arrest, because my trash can was outside for a day. And, and then I, you know, I get to, I own a couple properties here, I purchased a two flat that, you know, it's a, it's an awesome property, I live in it, I make it sexy, you know, change out the cabinets, paint the walls, you know, it's the kind of place I want to live. And I can't really afford the taxes, so I have to get a rental upstairs as well, and I, I keep finding that, you know, left and right, I'm getting nickled and dimed, it's 70 bucks now, it's 150 bucks now, et cetera. I bought the first one off-market, and, you know, I bought it for like a steal, and you guys assessed it for like 150 more, but because it was off-market, you know, and I know that this is more of a, the county, but, you know, it's a, you know, the taxes are up. Either way, I feel like I'm getting nickled and dimed, and my wife and I have really contemplated, look, we want to set down roots here, we want to, you know, make Highwood our home, we want to be able to afford it, and rent out, you know, the, the units that we have, and get people like us in, which, you know, it's kind of becoming more and more, you know, younger, you know, couples who want to really start putting roots down, you know? And, and that's kind of the dream, that's the American dream, but, you know, little things like this are causing us to beg the question, do we want to stick around? Do I, do I sell it all off? You know, I don't just own in Highwood, I own in Highland Park, I own a couple other properties. And, you know, there's, they're, they're much nicer to me, you know, they're not nickeling and diming me. Whether it's the ordinance that, you know, you guys are talking about, or, you know, all the, all the stuff as far as the zoning is concerned, or things like that, I just, I hope you guys can take into consideration, a young guy in his 30s who's, you know, trying to make his way, and I, I'm under the impression that you want people like me to come into your town and start developing, you know, more families, and kind of bring it back to the roots where it was. And so, I'm hoping that you guys will listen, pay heed, and, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good day. Bill Pagotti, Highwood, Illinois, resident forever. One of the things that's nice about Highwood is that we're not fighting each other on this, we're trying to aid each other on this. And some of the buildings are older, some of the buildings are younger, disparity in cost, we don't feel that, I don't feel, that this should be a money-making thing for the city. And I understand the city has difficulties, like everybody else in this world, finding income, but if you take money from the landlord's pocket, and we have a couple little things, but no big deal, that's money they're not going to use to upgrade the property, that's not, that's money they're going, they're not going to be able to use for a number of things. And that's money, in our case, we have some very non-affluent people, some of which work for me, that can't really afford a whole bunch of more stuff. And when you put another 10 bucks here, another 20 bucks there, it really hurts everybody. So, what we're looking to do here, and this group is all, we're not fighting you, we just would like to have cooperation and a second look at this thing, so that you don't put us, by hapschance, by the writing of what you've got out there, in a position where we have to do something ill-advised, perhaps even illegal, because the, the document is such that, that there's some double plays in the document that we have difficulty with. So, what we're really looking for is to get your cooperation as friends, and as, and as residents here, and we've been, I've been rezetti here probably longer than most people in the life in this room. So, we just would like the cooperation, and we'll give you ours, to get something that's amenable to everyone, that's fair to everyone, and so there's not disparagey between, some kind of a disparate thing, between a 50-unit deal, and a 20-unit deal, and a three-unit deal, mostly to bring in new development, I would think. But I'm just saying that this should not be a way of doing it, and, and, and we should have a, a common look with common thoughts from all folks that are all residents here. That's all.
Thank you. Okay.
I listened downstairs to the conversation that was going on outside, and I have to say that it kind of made my head spin a bit, because the conversation about inspection ordinances and fees, et cetera, had been going on since the late 90s. I can look around this room and see the father of one person that worked with, along with me and others, the son of another person, there were many, 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 many Highwood residents that worked on, in support of Highwood inspections. What I don't see in this audience anymore are some of the worst landlords imaginable that marked the city as something as undesirable to live in. And one of the reasons is because of the Highwood inspection ordinance, and the Highwood inspection. Having sat there and sat on the plan commission, and been involved with so many different organizations that work to better this community, bravo, I say to you, that you finally have an inspector that knocks on my door. Because what it does is change my neighborhood and improve my property, and instead of looking out the back door and seeing an alley that you're going to fix for the first time in 50 years, with money that they got, with money that they're getting because the fire department closed, I think that was one of the things that was said outside, that it was the dollar that Highwood was going to use, they're fixing my alley 50 years. The water that went into my property was destroying it. Bravo, I say to you again. The community was very instrumental in this, people from the plan commission, the zoning board, on and on and on. There are not 1,000 rental units, there are 1,200 out of 1,800 units. It's a 60% rental occupancy in this community. Highland Park has 12%, I think is what it is. That's a remarkable difference, and what that means is that your neighbors, if you own your property, you can bet your bottom dollar, your neighbors are renters. That means they don't run for office, they don't get involved in projects, it means all of those things. So, bravo to the city that would push towards property ownership, and part of that is done with inspections. I say bravo to you. It always hurts, it does, money's got to come from somewhere. Bravo, you found a spot. 60% rental occupancy does not make a healthy community. That's all I have to say. Well, I guess one more thing, bravo.
Anyone else that they found issues that we should be aware of, because we're not, we're actually taking notes and listening and all that, but if there is anything outside of the fees, the term licensing, you need to tell us.
My name is Joe Moniani. I have a little bit of an issue with the way the feeing goes out.
Okay.
The way it's written down. I understand, I'm a businessman myself, that when you go out to inspect something, there's a unit, 150 bucks. Two units, 150 bucks each, but when you start getting into higher amounts of units in the same building, your inspector can come out and he can knock them out pretty quick. I own several units in a building over here, there's 16 units in that building, and I didn't want to waste your inspector's time. So, I took it upon myself to get the keys to every one of those units. I spent a whole afternoon there with him, and got him in and out the door in two hours flat. When I came to pay my dues, because it was a 16-unit building, I knocked $25 off of each one of the things, because that's how I interpreted it. I was told, because each one of those units has a PIN number for a tax bill, it's 150 bucks a piece, and that's just how it is, and I don't get a break. I don't think that's right. I busted my rear end to get your guy in and out of here, because I'm not trying to waste your time, I understand that, but I would have to say that you should really re-look at that, because if that's how it's going to be, I would have to say that next time he has to come in for inspection, he's going to have to make 16 separate unit visits for me.
Good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this time wanting to bring up different issues? All right, come on up, I see him...
Someone's nudging somebody, so...
Come on up. Anything? I want to close it, and someone says, I want, I wish I would have talked about it, because unfortunately, it's not on the agenda, so it will not be, it's just going to be moved on. Okay. Scott, we got everything, you got good notes? All right, so you've got the letter from Howard Handler, I believe that came from as well. We will take a look at that, do you want to put that on the agenda for any alterations that you see?
Yes, I've actually, I've sent this on to our attorneys, so they're just currently reviewing that and a lot of the different items. There's a lot of different items that are really good input, and we'll review that.
If I may make a suggestion, we have a website, it's very automated, that will email you or text you the, a link to the agenda, and I know somebody mentioned that I didn't know about it, there, there is information, everything is public not, information, it does go out, it takes nothing more than going to the city's website and telling them what you want to see. You want it via email, you want it via text, it is a good, so you, as owners of properties, you can find out when there's water main breaks, you get texts or emails, everything out there that, anything that affects the city, we now communicate, because social media has, it's really, everything's spread out. Newspapers aren't reliable, nothing's reliable, so we try and take that ourselves. Go to the city's website, cityofhighwood.org, and, yes.
Now, isn't it correct, and you can, there are, you can, you don't have to sign up for everything, you can individually sign up just for alerts that you want. So, if you just want alerts about water main breaks, or just alerts about new agenda items, council things, you can sign up just for what you want. It's not like you're going to get bombarded with everything.
The other thing is too, I think we had three meetings where we discussed...
No, right. But, yeah, we have, this is, we've had three meetings for that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, it would be great if we had this type of input while in those meetings.
So, right, what we're saying is, we should have been, before we decided to do this, it was nobodies, but I appreciate you all coming out tonight and voicing your concerns, and they did not fall on deaf ears by any means. We will definitely readdress the ordinance, so I can't make any promises as to what will be changed, so please, when you do sign up for that, you can see what has been changed in the agenda, because the new ordinance, or change ordinances will be in that packet as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. You're more than welcome to stay for the meeting, but it's not as exciting as this was, so, thank you. We'll wait a couple minutes for everyone to go, then we'll restart the meeting.
Then you'll have a better understanding where, where we come, what we're doing and all that stuff.
Yeah, there's a, there's, I'm not saying agree or disagree, but there's a generational build in terms of how we got to where we got. It wasn't just without thought.
If you came, if you, if you go back and start reading the minutes, that's what you had to do. And, yeah, and then also speak to Ed, and then speak to Scott, you'll have an understanding.
It's a very good resource for us. It's been...
Don't forget, you have an employee, it's your cost of the actual, it's not, we don't make money off of it. It's not a money maker, you have to justify your costs.
Mr. Budnik?
That's so as old.
Yeah, that's not correct. That's bad information.
I read back. You were right on that, but it changes...
You have an original memo from October that started to assess, and all of that was discussed and eventually passed in January.
Yeah, so you'll see a lot more...
None of my salary or Adrian's salary is in the feed that was eventually passed. So, I understand where you would come from on that, but that's, that's some of the things we have to go through, this letter and address back, just, you know, to clear up some of that, too.
What's with the chain link fence stuff?
Oh, that's the...
I mean, you know what, you're not, you just don't, you, you get the letter...
You like them or you do not like them?
Well, it's not a question of, you know what, I'm neutral on it, but when you get a letter that says, your chain link fence is in a state of disrepair, we're not going to let you repair it. You need to take it down.
Correct, correct.
Well...
And you go to any community, probably run into the same thing, it's because he, they're, they're not allowed anymore, so therefore, if it's in disrepair, you can't...
Most communities don't allow front yard fences at all of any type or style.
Yeah.
So, it's, really, it lets them get out through there.
Maybe it's an education thing, you've got all of our, I mean, gosh knows, the forms that we filled out for you as landlords were pretty darn detailed. I mean, I gave you stuff that would make the IRS flush. So, you have all my information, you have my wife's information. When you're doing something, you know, why not involve some of the members of the community that would have something maybe positive to say? I'm not here to, to, I'm not, really, I'm not looking for a fight, I'm looking for what's going to be beneficial to all parties. How am I going to continue, I mean, most of my, most of our tenants that lived with us for over 10 years, most of them are just, they're, they're nice, hard-working people. You know, the, the whole issue of overcrowding, I get that, but, you know, you're, so someone has a baby, what are you kicking them out of your place? I mean, you know, if they, they have a, they have a, a new infant, and that puts them over a limit.
That's a, that's a fantastic example, and that's one that we're running into a lot, and I think not only on your properties, but a few others. But what sometimes we're seeing is, you know, it's a family in a one-bedroom that has a child, and then another child, and then another child. And we are seeing, and that's not a Highwood code, but that's on international...
It's a life-safety issue.
I agree.
A lot of times, they'll find multiple children in a bedroom that does not exceed 10 by 10, which is the amount of space that they really need. And at some point, it, it is important for the city to take on that bad guy stance and say, at a certain point, when your family grows beyond a certain size, that house is no longer capable of housing a family that size. And it might seem like a mean or tough thing, but, you know, it's a, it's something that we're responsible to do, because as soon as that house has a fire, and three children die in a 10 by 10 room, I'm the first person that's going to be sued, and I would deserve it.
So, just like, we, we have to go move on with our councils, but you'll see, just watch and, and participate, and we'll, let's move forward with where we're at, so...
And on any given Tuesday where we have a meeting, you, it doesn't have to be an agenda item, as you can see. Do, do us courtesy of coming and participating, because it does, this is the first time, there's more people that were here tonight than have been here in the past three years in total.
Well, money and action talk. You know what, you, the, the city has taken some heavy... You know what, the city has taken some heavy-handed steps, you know, for better or worse, and they double the fee. So, you've gotten our attention, unfortunately, you got our attention by doing it as opposed to publicizing, you know, right away after it was done, it got into the Highland Park news or the Hywood, you know, the Hywood news. But prior to that, no one talked about it. So, you know, and I, to your point.
Yeah, it's in the minutes.
We should have been reading thoroughly every agenda to every state council meeting.
That's not true, no. No, 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 no. That's not true either. I don't know how you would be notified, to be honest with you. It's not.
Send out for the text or email.
Even that.
But it's, listen.
We do want the technology to, we email one person at a time.
There's a lot of ways, and you'd have to put yourself on this side in order to understand. So, what I'm explaining to you is that there's a process, we always follow the process. The process, as you said, you stood up and you spoke, and so the process keeps on moving. It's not a drop dead, it's all or nothing, all right? So, we listen, we hear it, and we're looking at them. So, but you're, let's talk about life, not that Washington doesn't work, right? But here it's different. So, we're going to go down the middle. There'll be some things you're not going to like in here. It is what it is, right? But, you know, there's some things that are, we have, we just have to do. But there might be some adjustments that we, some things that we heard, that we will make those adjustments. We're not, as I said, we're not, we're not Washington. We do adjust accordingly, and we want it to work properly for the benefit and the safety and the well-being of the community.
Of the residents, yeah.
So, that's where we're headed. So, I will always invite you, as we said, to come back anytime and get the alerts, as Mayor and Alderman Fetterman for his last meeting have spoken to you about.
Second to list.
Shows up this time. But yeah, please, we're, you know, I think a lot of things has changed over the past few years, and we're going to keep on moving in that direction. We're going to hit some bumps on the way, but we're going to take those and keep on moving. But it's going to be for the benefit of everybody, and that's what we're looking for.
I don't think you can argue with the progress we've made. The question is, is, you know, let's continue to make good progress and accommodate everybody where we can.
And make progress.
But make progress.
So, I guess we'll see in a couple of weeks when we bring it back.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Take care, guys. Thank you.
All right. Moving along to number eight, committee reports. Nothing for this evening?
Sales tax is looking good, huh, Charlie?
Yep, sales tax was up again, about another 10% over last year.
Bring up big littles.
So, that's good, that's going to be good. All right.
I don't know if it's appropriate in the committee reports, theme of communication. Do we have a list of events that are coming up that we should start thinking about communicating to the Chamber of Commerce and/or other businesses in the center?
Well, the Chamber of Commerce, they all know about, actually, there's even members on the Chamber of Commerce that are on Celebrate Hywood, so.
But you are right, I think we do have to get something out to the community that, you know, we have that sign outside of Diambri's office.
I mean, the one Owen looks at.
Right. You'd be surprised, a lot of people see that. Maybe if we can get Celebrate Hywood to do some sort of an agenda, Farmers Market Starts.
Well, we will, yeah, that'll be on the next one, because we're going to be doing something.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure we're allowed to talk about, but it's off topic, but, well, it's kind of.
Any reports?
I guess it could be.
This is your, what's this, committee long-term planning?
Long-term planning, Matt.
Yeah, all right. So, speaking of signage, speaking of signage, it might be worth, when we replace the other signs, to repaint that one to match it?
Yes.
So, it stands out more?
Good point.
Right now, it's like, matches the building.
Yeah.
Which is an ugly building.
Brown on green, brown on green, something might just be worth. I never noticed that sign.
So, do we need somebody to aggregate all the events that we have going on, coming up and tell people?
Yeah, I think we have an aggregator, we just need to get it out so people can see it.
Didn't Patch just do a big?
Every, Patch, there's going to be a lot of stuff coming out.
It goes to the point that there is no one way of communicating with everybody, it's almost impossible.
Right. But we're going to shut down the road again. I think we should tell.
We're not shutting down the road.
That's not until Pumpkin Fest.
Okay. I'm just going back to last year, we had Pumpkin Fest, and I think the weekend preceding it.
Oh, the art festival.
That was the art fest, which is not, we're not bringing it.
So, the only festival we're shutting down the road for this year is Pumpkin Fest.
And maybe one other, but we'll see.
Okay. When we have an idea if we're going to shut roads down, I think we need to communicate.
Yeah, business.
Actually, this week, because Bufo's came in to apply for their car shows, so we checked with them, and it's the same weekend as the art show request, but we just reiterated with the art show that they're welcome to the Metro lot, but not the actual Sheridan Road spot.
Right, good idea.
We'll wait in here if they agree to it, but I do know.
A reason for them to shut down.
I do know it's in their call.
They could just kaputos a lot.
It's fenced in, it's safe.
Secure.
Put ponies in there.
A dog, it's a dog park.
All right. We'll go back on track here to the Treasures Report, 9.1 from February 2017, we did have that pre-session. Motion to approve that, please.
It's all you, Federal. This meeting doesn't move forward.
I guess we're not moving forward.
You don't like the Currie Hut?
We're not talking about the Currie Hut. What do you have against you? What do you have against?
Yeah, we're talking about the Treasures Report.
Oh, Treasures Report.
Yeah, that's, yes, I'll make that motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One, two. I went to the Currie Hut one time, they put me and Ellie up in the banquet room by ourselves, it was uncomfortable. I didn't like it.
Was it crowded that night?
There was nobody, they had a party coming in later, so.
I think it was because you're, like ethnicity or something like that.
I don't know.
So, if you're watching, this is what committee hall's like too, a lot of discussion. All right, move on to new business, 12.1, consideration of resolution approving an ARC recommendation for signage at 410 Sheridan Road, which is the Currie Hut.
Yes, we did, we said aye. We didn't say aye, you're right.
See, we are totally going to miss you. You're going to miss me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we pass the Treasures Report. 12.1, consideration of resolution approving the ARC application signage at 410 Sheridan Road, the Currie Hut. If I can get a motion to approve that, Matt.
Make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
You take that one, Brad.
You get the next one.
Brad, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I tend to make the next one.
Motion passes. 12.2 is a consideration of a resolution approving an ARC application for signage at 110 Washington Avenue. It's Leon Spa and Nails.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second. You should give somebody else a chance.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 12.3, we have a consideration of an ordinance regarding a special use permit.
This is tough on that.
And we are going to waive the parking shortfall variation from the City of Hywood zoning ordinance at 510 Bank Lane, which will be used for the new West Row Center.
Could you explain why?
I'll make that motion.
For the reference.
Okay, hold on one second.
We're actually approving the variation but waiving the fee.
Okay. So, that, we have a motion to, as suggested by council?
I'll make a motion to approve, and was it, and?
Waive the parking fee.
Waive the parking shortfall.
Fee.
Fee, sorry.
And waive first reading.
And waive first reading.
We're waiving a lot here.
There's a lot of waiving.
And then do I have a second for that, please? Okay, so the question is, what, why are we waiving the?
I just think, a small explanation due to the nature of the.
So, the New West Row Center is a non-for-profit organization.
Servicing the community.
They are, right, they've been servicing the community for quite so many years, they are moving locations to actually a more transportation-friendly location for pickup and drop-up of the children they helped. And because of the square footage of the place they are in, was it 14 is what they're requesting because of the size, however, because most are children and they only have four.
Employees.
Four spots with those employees, we will be waiving their overage, which is 10, for them. Let's see, we have a motion, we do have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Fetterman?
Yes.
Wahlberg?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Slavin?
Aye.
12.4, this evening we have a consideration of a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for sharing geographic information system services with the City of Highland Park. If I can get a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Nice. Second.
Let's see, we have a motion authorizing Sheridan Government, so we're going to do a roll call on this?
Yes, sir.
Can I have that? I want to put that on my.
Alderman, Slavin?
Aye.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Wahlberg?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
All right, next one, 12.5, we have a consideration of a motion directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Regional Emergency Dispatch Center, or RED Center, to provide monitoring and dispatching services to the City of Hywood.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do I have a second, please?
Second.
So, we are going back with RED Center, correct? We are no longer a member, but this is just for services. We are roughly going to be saving $40,000 to $50,000 annually just by being a non-member but using them for services. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Bryce?
Yes.
Wahlberg?
Yes.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Slavin?
Aye.
12.6 is consideration of a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with GW and Associates to provide financial record-keeping and payroll in the amount not to exceed $7,000 a month.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And this is, we've currently been using GW, Mr. Gonzalez and his firm for now at two years. They've checked off quite a few things on our audited financial statements, and they're doing a pretty good job. Would you, you interact with them much more?
Absolutely, they've done an exceptional job for us for the past two years.
Okay. So, we're bumping them up a little bit here. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Slavin?
Aye.
Bryce?
Yes.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Wahlberg?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is 12.7, we have a consideration of a resolution waiving competitive bidding and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Peter Baker &amp; Sons to repair or replace 10 storm sooner, easy for me to say, 10 storm water and sanitary sewer structures in the amount not to exceed $29,370. If I can get a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. It should be noted that we are doing this because of the great pricing that we're getting from Peter Baker &amp; Son. Normally it was, we have estimates as high as $50,000, this one's at $29,370. We will be looking for other projects that we might be able to squeeze in as well. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Fetterman?
Yes.
Wahlberg?
Yes.